Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, March 29, 2023. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Herzog.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Sillaji.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce two students to you tonight from Oklaun Elementary School. We have Annabelle Bauer and Aubrey Herr, and they are here to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We know that schools are about students, and we know that our guiding principle is students first, so it's always important to always have students at our meeting to remind us why we're here, and help us to make good decisions to affect all the students in all of our schools. So Aubrey, I want to thank you for coming here tonight and sharing your time with us. And Annabelle, same to you. There's a nice certificate for you to keep, and you're very loved, to keep as a remembrance of our special gratitude for your spending time with us. So thanks for coming to be here, but we appreciate your time. With that, we'll ask that Principal Scott Joe Hankneck comes to the table and shares some of the many positive things going on at Oklaun Elementary School.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity for having me. I'm Scott Joe Hankneck, principal at Oklaun Elementary. I've been in Oshkosh for 21 years in the school district. In the last 12 of those years, I've been at Oklaun Elementary, serving the students, staff, and family, and I've enjoyed every minute. I've also raised my family here in Oshkosh, and my son is a senior at West High School. He'll be going on to UW-Oshkosh, so he's going to finish his whole school career here in Oshkosh, excited for that. My daughter's at UW-Green Bay, but we won't hold that against her. But I am here to talk about Oklaun and some wonderful things happening this year. Our partnership with our PAL program for imprint continues to be amazing, the way that they support us in terms of some contributions of some supplies, being from office supplies, paper, pencil, pens, things that students and staff can use, all the way through clothing, other donations, including fundraising that they do, and financial contributions that we use for birthday books for our students, along with support from our PTO. Every student gets a book on their birthday, which is a wonderful thing for students to get. We're fortunate to have a very strong PTO and leadership within our PTO, and so our field trips that are funded by our PTO, they have a money account set aside in cooperation with a community foundation. They're putting money aside for future playground expansion or repairs. So planning out that playgrounds last around 20 years. We're a little over 12 years at Oklaun, and so we're a little over halfway through our playground, what our likely life hood is of that equipment, and so already planning for that repair and replacement of that equipment. In addition to right now, they're just gearing up and wanting to expand on our playground. And so our PTO does some wonderful things for Oklaun. We have a family night, April 17, which is going to include some dinner for families, as well as math and literacy resources that families will be able to take with them to be able to use at home, on the weekends, on weeknights, and throughout the summer, so that families can work together to enhance those academic skills. This fall, we had an all-school event, again in partnership and fundraising that we did to be able to host. Kelly DePuccio is an author, and one of the books she wrote, Grace for President, was a play at the PAC in Appleton. So after students got to meet with the author virtually, as a whole school, we went to the PAC in Appleton and went to that. And one of our teachers writes the grant to help with that, and our PTO helps fund that as well. Our K-Kids Kiwanis program, headed up by Kelly Larson, our fourth-grade teacher, currently has 21 active members, and they've organized Halloween candy to donate to the Hope fridge, hosted a food and hygiene drive, decorated positive message cards for students. So instead of if a student arrives late, they don't get an orange slip that everyone knows, oh, they were tardy, but it's a message of positivity and inspiration for students, so that when you're coming in late to a meeting, you kind of feel awkward or wondering if everyone's looking at you. So instead of that feeling, they have that inspiration and that hope of a positive message that they're getting. There's a kindness challenge with students and families, and they're currently planning a school dance to raise money for future service projects, and I hear the DJ is going to be amazing. In the area of specific with literacy and academics, staff have been very excited with the new curriculum resources that have been implemented, and the literacy improvement focus of leveraging the RISE program as organized by our instructional support teachers in third grade and in second grade at Oklaun Elementary. 22 third-grade students, and now we just started with 16 second-grade students are in that program. And since the start in October with our third-grade students and our assessment in January, there's been 10 students that have moved from more than a year below and moved to within a year of grade level. And that growth within the RISE includes fluency, sight words, and phonological awareness that they're working on. Likewise, LTERA has had a positive impact. With 20 spots of online tutoring through the Teachers College, it's demonstrated positive impacts within our scores, within I-Readies, and within our BASS. One success story that I want to share with you, there's a fourth-grade student who started the program at a third-grade level, and they are getting caught up, and they're expected to start fifth grade at a fifth-grade level. So they've been able to rapidly advance through that program. And the LTERA and the RISE is in addition to our phonics and our monthly CFAs, commative formative assessments, that the teachers are doing with all students in the classroom. Our Sabers program, where we're implementing the use of Sabers data, which is social, academic, emotional, and behavioral at-risk screener, we're utilizing that data to keep an eye on students. So we're not just monitoring the academics, but we're also monitoring the whole child to see how they're doing and the growth of that student, so we can be aware of any individual students that we need to provide support and assistance for. And last but not least, conscious discipline with our staff development. As a whole staff, we've gone through and done a book study on conscious discipline and working on the seven powers and the skills through various grants and donations. Over 12 staff from Oklaun have had the opportunity throughout the summer, volunteering their time to be able to go down to a week-long training session. And so the funding is through grants that they've been able to pay for the cost of the trip, the hotel, the sessions, but it's their time they're donating to improve and enhance their ability to meet the needs of students. So those are just some of the wonderful things that are happening at Oklaun Elementary. And I want to thank you again for the time to be here. I'm very excited about where we are as a community, as a school district, to see everyone pulling in the same direction and the leadership we have. It's really an exciting time to be in Oshkosh.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Joe Hankneck, and your two awesome students who joined us today as great representatives of Oklaun Elementary. Once again, you're welcome to stay for our meeting, and we also understand if you have other things on your schedule tonight, so you're free to move on if you choose. Thank you. With that, we'll move on back to the agenda with our land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'ochunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnabago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities, who have stewarded this land throughout generations, and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president's report.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, yes. Somehow I always lose that one here. Let's look at the next agenda item, which is approval of the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to move anything around in the order in which it currently appears on the agenda? I'm seeing no interest in doing that, so we'll accept the agenda as written by acclamation, and thank you for that point of order. Okay, now we'll move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president's report. We have two retirements this evening. Elizabeth Kotenberg is currently a cross-categorical teacher at South Park Middle School and has been with the district since 2015. Tracy Maron is also a cross-categorical teacher, and she serves at Oklaun Elementary currently and has been with the district since 2013. We want to say thank you to these individuals for all they have done to enhance the learning of our students and interact with our parents, and wish them a long, healthy, and happy retirement as they move on to another stage of life. Is there any other board member who wanted to comment on these retirements? Okay, then moving on. CISA VI Board of Control. I attended that meeting on March 14, and I have some, an example of their communications. They seem to do a great job of condensing onto one page some of the many positive things that are going on there. Ted Nitske is the executive director out there, and he sent out a message recently to the Board of Control noting that CISA VI has been named as a Gallup Exceptional Workplace Award winner for 2023. Just one of, I think, 57 such businesses across the world to receive that designation, so that's pretty special. When I attended the March 14 Board of Control meeting, there was a vacancy that occurred on the board for a large school district, and I was nominated and voted on to the Board of Control to serve out that term, which ends in 2023. So we will again have a seat on that board, so that'll be good for us. Last week, Wednesday, was Day at the Capitol, sponsored by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and I want to thank both Dr. Davis and Mr. Nihans for those excellent written materials that were prepared for the Legislative Committee, because I used those in meeting with representatives of Representative Schra, Representative Paul Mary, and Senator Fine. We didn't get a chance to talk with any of the lawmakers, because both the Assembly and the Senate were in session. But it was very helpful to be able to share those written materials and to speak from them with representatives from other school districts in the area. And they also coached us on how to be more effective in approaching our lawmakers and sending thank-you notes and inviting them to come to our schools, things we've talked about, but it was very reaffirming. So that's the end of my report, so let us move on to the superintendent's report.
Great. All right, the superintendent's good news report for tonight starts at Carroll Trigger Middle School. They had a fantastic Pi Day recipe for success. Students in the school's teen life class and sixth-grade math classes teamed up with the Oshkosh Fire Department for a unique Pi for Pi Day project. The unique collaboration was made possible by one of the inaugural Career and Technical Education Integrated Curriculum Grants awarded by the Education Foundation this year. So great job for everyone involved. The NED Show recently visited Jefferson Elementary. NED stands for Never Give Up, Encourage Others, and Do Your Best. Jefferson students had a blast listening about all of NED's adventures while learning the importance of those three life skills. They also enjoyed some magic, humor, and yo-yo tricks along the way. You can never have too many yo-yo tricks. Fourth graders at Oklaun Elementary recently hosted a wax museum, and it was incredible. I had the opportunity to experience it myself, and it was awesome to see the students really embrace their learning experiences. As part of the project, students researched an important figure to identify facts and key achievements for their biography informational writing unit. They then created a trifold dressed up in character, which was great, and during a two-day open house, took on a role of the character as families and students visited the wax museum. So great job to everyone involved in that. Earlier this month, we had 47 Mung students and six staff members from Merrill Middle, Webster Stanley Middle, Oshkosh North, and Oshkosh West receive an exclusive opportunity to watch the world premiere of The Song Poet, the first Mung story adapted for the operatic stage. This discusses topics related to Mung heritage, seeing representation of oneself in culture ignites the learning and propels success. This was a very powerful experience. I just wanted to share a few quotes from some of the students and a staff member that experienced it. So a student shared the following. "Before this project, I didn't know much about my culture. All I knew was the language, but only barely. Now I know so much and even more of what my family had to go through." Another student said, "I'm very appreciative that the school district was allowing us to go, and it showed that they cared about us, learning more about our culture." And finally, from one of our educators who had an opportunity to have this experience, "Through this experience, I was able to see the sheer emotion of individuals learning about their heritage and feeling accepted for being different. I hope it brought them as much joy as it brought me. The diversity of our district is powerful, and we are grateful for this type of opportunity and what it provides such meaningful experiences for our students." So thanks for that great experience for the students and staff that were involved there. The month of March is also recognized as Music in Our Schools Month, the time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. As a district, we are grateful to be able to provide exceptional music education and experiences in our schools. We have so many talented students and are blessed with the most amazing music educators and leaders. Please join us in recognizing our music educators for all that they do, and consider attending an upcoming student concert or musical production. You definitely will not be disappointed in that. We recently received as a district the Community Partnership Award by the City of Oshkosh, recognizing our contributions to advance the quality of life in Oshkosh. The award highlighted our evolving partnership with the Oshkosh Public Museum and our work that aligned the museum's exhibits, school-age programming with the district's curriculum standards, and to bring students back to the museum for field trips. Together, our district and the Oshkosh Public Museum are bringing history to life for students while helping the museum meet its mission in a critical way. We also want to congratulate the grants and award recipients recognized at the 2023 Celebrate Oshkosh event hosted by the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. Fruit trees, calming tools, basic needs supplies, interactive writing tools, nursing assistant scrubs, and light tables are just a few of the resources that our students will have access to, thanks to these innovative grants written by our outstanding educators and made possible through the funding from generous donors and community partners. Our own education foundation contributed over $8,000 to our educator awards this year. Also during the Celebrate Education event, we were able to recognize Ted Nitske, Chief Executive Officer and Agency Administrator for CISA VI, as the recipient of the 2023 Spirit of Education Award. The Spirit of Education Award is presented to an individual or a team of individuals who provides exceptional service to the district, schools, and community, has a passion for learning, inspires others, and is a role model for school and community partnerships. We've been very fortunate to partner with Ted on numerous initiatives at all levels of our organization. Through his leadership and with his expertise, the district has embraced a culture of continuous improvement. And as an advocate for education, Ted has a unique ability to inspire and energize those around him. He's often described as contagiously energetic, insanely curious, and service-oriented. So congratulations to Ted on that award again. And finally, just again a reminder of our COVID-19 plan that continues to be on our website for this year. And then finally, just another opportunity to acknowledge and thank all of the community partners and schools for having me out and about to see the great things that are going on in our schools and beyond our school boundaries as we continue to support students. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we go on to committee reports. Education Committee.
Do we have a verbal report?
Yeah, there's no district administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Verbal report from the last.
I think I need practice in my reading skills. District Administrator Supplemental Report, verbal report from the March 8 listening session. I'm sorry.
No problem. We had a busy listening session on March 8. We had several people who came to speak at that session. The first person came and they spoke in support of the reorganization plan. They saw it as an investment in our city and was very supportive of the design of the position. The second person also spoke in support of the DEI coordinator. They felt the position would benefit other students who are diverse in other ways. They wanted to make a point of that, that it wasn't just race, it was diversity of all types. They mentioned the free busing initiative and hoped that the board would vote to continue that in the future as it comes up for review. The third person also spoke in support of the new reorganization plan, specifically the DEI position. The next person came in, and you're starting to see a theme, they also supported the DEI position. They asked some questions about how the new schools would be organized, and we were able to answer that. The next person came in, they supported the DEI position, felt it was long overdue with the diversity of Oshkosh increasing. The next person came in and spoke about something different. They spoke about our policy on excessive absences, and I believe that is going to be reviewed at the policy and governance level. The last person came in and they had a discussion and questions about whether or not the middle school was on budget, and we were able to confirm that it was. They were wondering when we will be receiving our ESER fund reimbursement. We were able to answer that question. They did ask some questions about the taxpayer impact of the two new positions. That was explained, and they also expressed some concerns over the district virus clinic. So that was the group that presented to listening session. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gunn. You're welcome. Now we will move on to other reports, starting with Education Committee.
Thank you. We met on Thursday, March 2, and discussed proficiency scoring at middle school for the 2023-2024 school year. Julie Conrad explained to the committee that the district will be shifting from a culture of grading to a culture of learning, meaning proficiency scoring at the middle school level starting in the fall of 2023. 50% of the middle school teachers are already using proficiency scoring, while 100% of elementary teachers are using it. So what that means is the 4-3-2-1 system. The reason for this change at this time is equity-driven teaching and learning through standards-based learning unit frameworks. This model of grading provides a snapshot view of a student's level of achievement towards essential standards. It removes non-academic factors from influencing the academic grade and focuses on what a student knows and is able to do at a grade level. The timeline for making this change has been in motion, with groundwork being laid this past November through January. So now, from February through May, staff will work to create common language, learning targets, success criteria, and vocabulary. Then in the summer, IST teams will work to create canvas blueprints and additional communication to families. Communication will go out to families this spring and in August, with implementation this September, when all middle school teachers will be implementing proficiency scoring. I know there were some questions that we had heard in the community regarding it, so it was a good conversation at the meeting, and was able to bring up some of those questions that was talked about, I think got answered in this next section, which is, many schools in the Fox Valley area already use this type of scoring. At the high school level, 4-3-2-1 scoring or proficiency scoring is used and converted to a grade. The high school level is not moving to proficiency scoring in the foreseeable future. Middle school students will be taught about grading and expectations at the high school level before moving to high school. That was an important part that I had brought up and starred here on my sheet, that makes sure that the kids are prepared. This practice positions students to focus on learning, so that when they enter high school, they are ready for the rigorous grade-level expectations and coursework. Principals are 100% on board and were adamant about rolling it out at the building level. It's about teaching the skills so that the base is there when the student reaches high school. So as I said, it was a really good conversation and puts the focus on learning, and I like the sentence I read about removing non-academic factors, which involved, you know, missing class or not turning in homework, and really focusing on where the student is and making sure that they learn. So it was a good conversation. Next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 6 at 8:00 a.m. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Next, we have Facilities and Finance.
Thank you. Facilities and Finance met on Thursday, March 16. We had quite a full meeting. The first thing we discussed was OEA negotiations, and Dr. Davis reported that the teachers' union negotiations are quickly approaching, and we asked two board members to sit in on those negotiations, along with Mr. Nihans and Ms. Johnson. The district realizes that we need to be competitive in the market, but we also need to have sustainable growth. We talked about inclement weather days for hourly employees, and Ms. Johnson reported that she's looking into other school districts' policies, and we will talk about it again at an upcoming meeting. We talked about the budget amendment. Mr. Nihans provided the committee with information on upcoming changes with regards to the DPI formal approval process. We then talked about seasonal wage adjustments, and Ms. Johnson proposed the recommendation to adjust the wage for seasonal employees earlier in the year so we can be competitive and get the word out about opportunities that are available for employment. Temporary teaching associates transitioning to permanent. Johnson reported that there are 21 current positions that have been in this category since pre-COVID. These positions have been imperative to the operation of the district, and they will benefit the school district if these positions were to become permanent. It is being considered. Read Playground Update. There is a parent currently trying to raise money for the new playground, and years ago it was decided that the playground funding would have to come from the PTOs. We understand that that is not always an equitable solution, and the school district is looking into ways that we can make it more equitable for all schools. Our next meeting is April 20 at 7:30 a.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. Legislative Committee.
Thank you. The Legislative Committee met on March 9 at 8:30 in the morning. We discussed reading. There's a current energy around the science of reading within the legislative caucuses, and we discussed about how that could be beneficial for the state and the school district. We discussed ESER money and how districts are spending dollars. There's concern with legislatures that the majority of schools haven't spent their ESER dollars yet. District representatives explain that the money is being spent and is accounted for. It may not be on the books yet as claimed. Dr. Davis, or Superintendent Davis, and five principals from OASD attended the Day at the Capitol, which was originated by CISA VI, which was a really good thing, and they got some feedback on where per pupil spending would be in the next upcoming budget. So we're hopeful that that turns out as a positive thing for all of our students. And then we, the committee discussed waiting on scheduling meetings with legislatures until after the April election, when the board does reorganization. The next meeting for the Legislative Committee is scheduled for April 13 at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you, Mr. Wright. And finally, the Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met on Thursday, March 7th at 1:00 p.m. We discussed Policy 5330, Administration of Medication slash Emergency Care. And we mainly discussed CBD products in that discussion. The discussion was based on if CBD products were beneficial for or could be beneficial in school for some kids related to behaviors, et cetera. However, we got information that since CBD isn't, the CBD stuff isn't really regulated or FDA-approved, that'd be hard for us to control how that's administered within our schools. So we left that policy as the same. The next thing we discussed was Policy 1120, Equity Non-Negotiables. And we recommended that equity non-negotiables come to the board as its own full policy that we will vote on tonight. And the next meeting for Policy and Governance is going to be, I've got it right here, Tuesday, April 4th at 1:00 p.m. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. You had a full agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on then, we go to non-agenda-related public forum, and we did not have anyone sign up for that. So we move on to the agenda-related public forum, and no one signed up to speak on any agenda-related topic tonight. So we will go on to our one and only workshop for this evening, the Continuous Improvement Plan, which will be led by Dr. Davis. Some of you may remember that this was on our agenda for the March 8th meeting. That was a very full meeting. And in respect for everyone's time, it was suggested that we move the Continuous Improvement Plan workshop to this evening. So this is where we are, and we will be voting on this later as an individually considered resolution. So Dr. Davis and your team, please take it away.
Yeah, thank you. So the Continuous Improvement Plan that you see in front of you is a draft that our team has been working with, specifically with Ted Nitske at CISA VI through our development from really last summer through this spring. So it had a lot to do with our administrator training and process, continuous improvement in our process development and raising our skills. And the culmination was to be able to create a Continuous Improvement Plan structure that takes the integrity of our current strategic plan, but also brings the metrics of our strategic plan out much more explicitly, puts together a cover page that's kind of a snapshot of all of our measures, if you will, and then provides detail then on the inside into each one of the key performance indicators and looking at defining each one of them, why they matter, consisting of a rating, and then celebrations, and then opportunities for improvement. Again, this is a plan that will continue to guide our work. One of the advantages, I think, of this plan versus what we currently have, you know, our current strategic plan is a five-year plan and is a very solid plan. And I feel very blessed to be able to come into a district that has that much structure and continuity and feedback from the community. And so we've been able to make some good strides with that plan. What we've seen in the progress of strategic planning is to be, to also be more responsive in that when we're looking at a five-year plan, sometimes things get a little bit stagnant within that plan. And so what this plan will, what the proposal is, is that this plan would be our strategic plan, but it would be an annual strategic plan that would have consistency on the key performance indicators. So those aren't things that would really change much, if all, if at all, year to year, but would allow us to drill into and communicate in great depth within our system what we hold most dear and what our measurements are, and really providing us with a standard of excellence then in the areas of learning and academics, finance and operations, safe and healthy schools, and engagement and communication. So it's really a culmination of a lot of the work that the board has provided in giving, like in reading achievement, for example. The board policies, we were able to use the board policies, which are a great beacon for us, to be able to use in the development of our reading achievement that's as a key performance indicator that sits under learning and academics. So we really were able to integrate all of the work that we've been able to do, really from the current strategic plan all the way through my work with the team over the last year and a half with Ted, and to be able to come up with this plan. And again, Ted's worked with multiple districts on this type of structure, and it's done that for several years now. And it really provides, I think, a more clear and consumable product from a community standpoint. And I think internally, from a staff standpoint, it also provides us with clear measurements and clear indicators. And many times in school districts, we spend a lot of time talking internally about which measures are the best measure and where we're going to go with it. And what this will do is provide us with clear targets, so we're not spending time talking about necessarily those issues, but really talking about the how we get at these measures and how we're lifting students up and supporting them in better ways. And so I'm excited about this as an opportunity as we would move forward. We've had a couple of opportunities for some community input. We had our community engagement session on March 1st. And so feedback from that session was included in the board packet. And we were looking for partnerships and also pluses and wonderings from the document. So we received, we had over 70 people attend that, received some good feedback. And then also, I used the Superintendent Advisory Committee to be able to provide some feedback on this also. And I provided you with a hard copy of what that feedback was. And I know Farvin Beth, I think, attended that session. And so what I did, just for clarity's sake, I didn't use any of that feedback from the community sessions and tweak what's in front of you right now, because I wanted you to see like the plan that those groups were looking at and then be able to apply that feedback accordingly. So that was my thought process and where we are right now. So if there's, you know, tweaks, things that you would want to take a look at, that's what I felt was appropriate for the workshop, that we could make those changes tonight in the workshop session and approve them later tonight and later in the meeting. Or certainly, we can come back at a later meeting and be able to make some of those changes. But again, just thankful for the work that we've been able to use Ted Nitske to be able to partner with his expertise, and a lot of work with our team internally to make sure that all of these measures would create consistency with what we're currently doing. So these things wouldn't be a new direction, per se. They would be really trying to provide us with some roots that we can use to measure things a little bit more deeply, if you will. So that's my intro, if you will, and we'll open it up.
Mrs. Wyman.
I'm, I don't want to say concerned. I like the wonderings. I like all of the comments that were given. But for us to sit here and go through each one of them, I think, would be incredibly time-consuming. And I don't know that it's purposeful for your overall vision of what you're trying to accomplish. So I'm wondering where we're going with all of these extra items.
So my thought tonight was, yeah, an opportunity to review those as part of the packet. If there was themes that jumped out for you, that you had questions on, or things that you thought, you know, may, you know, should be part of the plan, I guess that's what I was looking for, for specific feedback. Yeah, not going through it, you know, certainly line by line, but any themes that jumped out. One of the things that was clear to me in some of our conversations was really naming this as our strategic plan. I think that's an important point, that it's not, you know, we have a continuous improvement plan, and then we have a strategic plan. So I think from a title standpoint, I think that's an important marker. The idea is that this, again, would be an annual plan. And so in February each year, we would roll this plan out, and we would celebrate the achievements from the previous year. And then we would talk about what our opportunities for improvements are the next year. So it would be a little bit different from what we, our normal cadence from a district standpoint is our school year, kind of September to June. This would be a little bit more on just the calendar year as we move forward. The advantage of that is for us to be able to roll out our strategic plan accomplishments and have our conversations in line with the open enrollment window, which is the beginning of February. So we wanted to be able to have that be an opportunity for us to be in front of the community and, again, celebrate and then look forward to what we're working on.
So would the meeting be before it's rolled out for the next year to try to like, would it be a meeting where you kind of talk through what the numbers look like, and then you get feedback from the community to kind of build the plan for next year?
Well, we can do it multiple ways. So the way that I was thinking about doing that was to be able to have kind of a launch of the strategic plan, not necessarily getting feedback. We would be getting feedback along the way. Because one of the things that you'll see in here, and it's outside of the strategic plan, but it's an important part of it, is the last document that was part of this packet, was looking at our monitoring schedule. So I think that's an important part of this, that each one of the key performance indicators is pulled out on our monitoring schedule. So essentially, each month, we'll have one of these key performance indicators as either a staff report or doing a workshop on them. That's where we'll really drill down and see like our disaggregated data by race, you know, by socioeconomic status. And we'll be monitoring some of these key performance indicators, like reading multiple times a year. But otherwise, you know, some of them will just be on an annual basis. So that's an important part. And during those conversations, I guess that's where I would expect, you know, feedback from the board, and we can explain, you know, what our action steps have been and get into some depth. Because when you're looking at, you know, 19 key performance indicators, you know, it's going to be, it would be difficult to be able to have a robust conversation about all 19, I would say. So that's, I would expect to kind of gather feedback, because the formal document we would be putting together probably December and January for that rollout as we move forward.
Would you still have the meeting like you've done the last couple of years, where you kind of rolled that out to the public?
Yeah, and that's what I would expect, is that we would have that similar meeting and then use that as an opportunity, certainly to take feedback, but I think also to really continue to solidify our partnerships. Like where can we plug community members in to be part, to help lift us up? I think that's an important part of this plan, and to be able to do that again in February as a celebration of our system as we're moving forward. I'll say the other piece that I was going to mention that was a theme that wasn't included in the original document, but based on feedback from the Superintendent's Advisory Committee and the community session, was looking at an equity section, right, to call out. So we know that there's equity work that's built into each one of these areas, and we'll be able to tease that out. But one of the things that crossed my mind and that I wanted to be able to discuss is, does it make sense, you know, similar to having a technology plan and a safety plan, that we have an equity plan that we would have that would be teased out? And it also provides me with good, better symmetry when we have, under safe and healthy schools, if we have an equity plan, which is, I think, the appropriate spot for it, then we'd be able to go 5-5-5 and 5 for our key performance indicators. So it helps my OCD a little bit when I've got a better balance in that space. But I think that's a way, again, it's, we won't be capturing all of the nitty-gritty details and everything we're doing in equity, like in one plan. But I think it's a way to raise up some of our main points that we really want to focus on. And certainly, bringing on a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is going to be an opportunity for that person to lead that initiative and lead that plan. And again, we'll all be contributing to that. But I think one of the things that we have gotten feedback on is just struggling to really identify that, how we're communicating our equity work, that we have our equity work going on. I think an equity plan could be a vehicle for us to be able to move forward with that. So what exactly that looks like, I don't know. And I would want our new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator to have a lot of input into that. I think we can look at other plans from other organizations. But that's a theme that I saw that really jumped out to me in different places that I thought would fit well on here. So I just wanted to offer that.
I personally think it's critical to have an equity plan as long as we are, since we have put this position and voted on the position, there has to be some measurements to know that we are doing what we're setting out to do.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I agree.
I have a question. I know. Are you going to put something together similar to this, where on a one kind of page thing to? Obviously, there's a lot more going on with that, but this is just such a nice, clean look to that.
Yep, it is. And really, so that front page would be this front page.
It's the top.
It would be similar to this, you know, from a measurement standpoint. What I also anticipate us being able to do electronically is to be able to, you know, create links inside. So you can move from the front page anywhere in the document, so you don't have to, I know it's a little clunky right now for scrolling all through it. But I think, so then if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at that front page and I want to look at, you know, where our fund balance is at, I can click on that, and I can get right to that page. So there's some things that we can do electronically, just to make it, again, we want this to be more consumable, more transparent with our measures, and be able to navigate through it. So that would be the spirit of like the one page, the plan on a page, if you will, would be that first page, and then underneath it, each one of the key performance indicators having that structure.
I just really like that. So I envision it online, a parent could look at the student involvement and activities, and they'd click on that link, and it would go right to the page there.
Correct.
I do think this is much easier to consume as far as seeing where our goals are going. In past strategic plans, you know, there's been, we've had different ones. We've had one that were a lot of sheets. We've had this one that was one sheet, but it still had, you know, documentation behind it showing how we were working on our goals. I feel like this is a much easier way for the community to see how we're working on those goals. And I feel like it's probably also a little more honest on our part, too, to express those. I guess my questions have to do with how this is going to replace the strategic plan. In the past, whenever it's been time to make a new strategic plan, there have been, there's been a big push for community surveys. So I'm wondering how often will we send out surveys that anyone in the community can respond to, even if they can't maybe make it to that meeting or can't come in here to one of our board meetings? I want to make sure we're still sampling the community.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's important. So in prior districts, what I've experienced, which I think works, is about every five years, like having a gathering, like a formal, kind of a full gathering of like, let's just reset. There's a cadence about every five years where that feels like a pretty good space, which is, you know, why a lot of the strategic plans would be, you know, for a five-year period of time. What I think we could do, you know, in a structured sense, is be able to have those types of gatherings, which would be more than we would have, what I would anticipate maybe doing annually, would be a little bit more of a presentation. I think every, you know, fifth year, if you will, or whenever the board decides. But I would say, you know, every five years, to be able to really get together and like, let's dig into these indicators and like, do they make sense anymore? Are there other ones, you know, that we want to be able to work through? And certainly, we'll always do that in a context of, we can't measure everything, right? If you're measuring everything, you're measuring nothing. So to be able to keep it to, you know, something that's, you know, consumable like this. But I think that, to your point, I think the community engagement piece is important. So I guess I would just lean on board members to get responsive, whether or not, you know, that cadence feels all right, or if it would be more frequently, or. But I've done that, you know, in other districts. And I know you guys have done that also here, too, for the development of the strategic plans. I think annually gets to be a lot, and you're kind of all over the place. But I think every, you know, every five years seems to be a good place to land.
Yeah. And would that include like the mission and vision and guiding principle and core values? Every five years, the board and the community would be able to give input on those as well?
I think so. I mean, to me, that's enough time, it's enough time to get deep, because I think that's important from an implementation standpoint. We're not jumping all over the place. But also, like, if there's something that just has clearly changed, or if there's an issue that came up, you know, that the board and the community feels like the system really needs to focus on this, because this has been missing, it would be an opportunity to be able to integrate that. I would always start with the footprint of where we're at, because certainly, this didn't come from nowhere. You know, there's some legacy and some tradition with that, that a lot of people had input to. And I think it's working well. But I think that five-year check just keeps it fresh, if you will, and keeps it real. And that's the balance between keeping it fresh and real and giving us enough time to really go deep and have continuity into these, you know, the core values, the mission work, and the indicators as we move forwards. So I anticipate, again, you know, these aren't things that are idle for us. You know, when we're talking about core values, part of my interview process, like with our upcoming assistant superintendents, is, you know, them identifying their personal values, you know, what are their core values as a person, and how do we line those up with the organization core values, right? There's like real, they're not just like letters on a page. Like, these are really important points for us to be able to operationalize and go deep in these key performance indicators. important points for us to be able to operationalize and go deep in these key performance indicators. So again, I think having some consistency to that is important. But every five years has been, you know, what's, what I've seen and what's been recommended in other places.
Thank you. That's all the questions that I had.
I mean, I like the way it's laid out. I like that we're going to continually monitor things. I mean, if you look at the four core areas, the core areas, learning and academics, finance and operations, safe and healthy schools, engagement and communication, and if you're doing really well at all four of those things, your district is doing really, really well. You know, I mean, obviously, there's a lot in each subset, section to, to get into to be performing really well in all those areas, and those are laid out, you know, underneath each of them, but I like that. You know, and I like that most good organizations are continually monitoring things, and they are able to make changes quicker than most other organizations. You know, they're, they're able to identify trends faster and make shifts quicker than most other organizations, and that's what makes them successful on a lot of levels. So I like that, I like that we're doing this, and I, and I like the format.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said. I think this fine tunes the work and better defines the work for administration. I've been out in the community a bit over the last couple of weeks, and I've been hearing what I think are some, some themes, and those are a desire for greater accountability across the board, but primarily in the areas of math, literacy, district report card, and what this new director of diversity, equity, and inclusion is going to do. So that is a consistent theme, and I think this is perfect to, to take a look at that. I've always wondered about previous strategic plans over the last 10 years where those in charge were giving reports to the board about the degree of completion, that they were 67% completed or 24% completed. That really didn't tell me anything about the quality or the impact or the results of what was going on. To me, it's kind of like the parent who asks the child to clean the bedroom, and the child says, "I'm done." And the mother, father look in, guardian look in, and they say, "Hmm, I think you could do that better, or that better, or that better." So it's not just about completion, it's not a checklist, it's about results, and the results need to be related back to student improvement and growth. And that's what I'm hearing in the community. Not hundreds of people, but people who follow the board and know what, seem to know what's going on, and I think the public will be pleased with, with these results. And I think it helps define expectations at the building level, at the administration level, at the buildings, as well as the classroom level. And it's easier then to communicate to parents and to the public, what are we working on? What, where are we going with these things?
Yeah.
And so I think it'll be very good for the system.
And that brings up a, a good point, I think, is how does this cascade down to the building level, right? Because that's, that's an important piece. So what we'll plan on doing, if this gets approved tonight or in the near future, is being able to start work, start working with our buildings, to be able to, one, just define, you know, what this, you know, this document is from a system standpoint, but also begin to work with our buildings on the development of individual building strategic plans, which will have the same framework, but allow each building the autonomy to be able to do the work that, that is in front of them, you know, what their needs are, but still along these same lines. And so as you look at reading achievement, for example, so the, you know, we will have a district strategic plan that'll have, you know, an annual report, but each building will also have that plan, and it'll outline where that individual building is, what their celebrations are, and what their opportunities for improvement are. And so that type of consistency also allows teachers to be able to better see themselves in the larger strategic plan, because they have a direct connection for how their grade is contributing to that building level. And so that cascade effect from, you know, the boardroom down to the classroom, this provides a good, consistent tool for that, for clarity of expectations, and then also the autonomy for progress. You know, we know that progress, you know, is essential, you know, for us to be accountable to our community, but also autonomy and creativity are really important in that, because these are, like, we're talking about really complex, like, difficult issues. Like, there's not one thing, do this, and then it's going to work, otherwise, this would be solved and we'd be doing other things. So the, the idea to empower our professionals, our teachers in their classrooms as professionals, provide them with the autonomy, and also provide them with a professional respect to know that this is the target they're shooting for. Like, that, that's what this provides, all the way up and down the system, and that'll really help us with the professional development. We've already seen that progress in literacy already this year, as we're consistent resources, and as we're looking at our common formative assessments month to month, the responses that I get from teachers and from principals is just, that clarity has helped so much us be more efficient with conversations, more direct with resources, and allowing us to respond with programs and supports, like, in real time. Like, we don't have to wait year to year, or we don't have to wait five years to shift and pivot, and like, now it's our focus. Like, I want to know in November, you know, where our hotspots are, so we can make those changes and get those supports. So this is one of the tools, it's, it's always human work, so, you know, nothing's more valuable than our people, but this is one of our tools that's really going to help us be more consistent, clear with our expectations, and provide, I think, better empowerment for, for our staff as we're moving forward. So that, I'm sorry, just to give a quick timeline of that, though, so we're reasonable about our expectations, so that's something that is not going to happen for the beginning of next year. So we're looking at probably the 2024, so the following strategic plan. And mostly because we want to make sure that we're slower is faster, like, in the long run with this, and we want to make sure that all of our buildings are able to make sense, that our staff are able to make sense of what these plans are and how they can, how they're influenced by them. And so nothing is worse than, you know, for a staff member to hear a new initiative rolled out in April or May and saying, hey, by the end of next, or by the beginning of next year, like, you need to have your plan set, and be like, what? And so we'd much rather have them working on their literacy and math resources to prepare that to move kids forward, and then be able to support little by little each one of these sections in that building report, and then allow some time in the spring for us to just have some sense-making of it, if you will, at a building level. So then when we get to that next strategic plan, then we'll have, what I envision eventually, and hopeful, is that we'd have a community celebration of the district's strategic plan, and then we would have at one station, and then we'd have all of our schools in the same location with their accomplishments that they've had, and the community would have an opportunity to see all of our schools, you know, as we come around and look and celebrate what our highlights are. But there would be accountability that would look consistent for our community members to consume, but there'd be a district level and then a, a school community celebration also. That, to me, is the, the vision of where we can truly get that community engagement in four out of the five years, and then in the fifth year, then let's get everybody back together to just re-ground ourselves as we're moving forward. So I'm excited about that as, as an opportunity, but, so I just wanted to be able to provide that with a timeline to make sure that we're also realistic about, you know, the work that we need to do, so.
No muster cards.
So I, can I ask a specific item on here?
Sure, oh, yeah.
So the, this is the first time to see something I've been asking for, for a long time, which was student engagement. And so seeing the numbers, when it came up at 49.2, almost to 50% of high school students are involved in at least one extracurricular activity. How do we define extracurricular activity?
So we've looked at athletics, clubs, really anything that we have that would have a adult sponsor, which is basically...
So like, like a club during W hour, like at West, like, that would be something that would qualify?
I believe so. Yeah, yeah, I believe we counted that also.
Because I think, there's a variation of that, so I think being involved in something...
There is, yeah. The, the spirit behind it is that, you know, our kids connecting with something bigger than themselves, and in some way contributing to, you know, to the school community, right? And so I said, you know, for my girls, I'm like, I don't care what you do, but you need to do something. Like, you need to be, you need to be involved at some level. And we have such a variety of interests, but what's great to see is, is how much our staff commits to creating really creative opportunities for kids to be engaged. The opportunity to go to the Wave Robotics presentation last night, like, it was incredible the diversity that you'd see, like, at that activity with kids doing everything from the engineering to the presentations, you know, and we have that going on every day across the system. So, so, yeah, we want to be able to, to measure that, and we want to be able to increase that. And part of what we'll look at from a budget standpoint also is, you know, where we, where's our budget trailing these key performance indicators? Or is it not trailing, where is it supporting, I should say, you know, as we're moving forward? So co-curriculars will be, you know, one of the examples that, that'll be proposed in May.
Thank you.
And relating that back to the school perception survey, I believe there's an item on there that relates to the board being willing to provide the resources to, to match whatever the priorities are in the district, whether it's engagement or it's improving math scores and so on, making sure that we're providing the resources necessary. And we've, we've had that discussion many times around this table in terms of, are we, we've asked people, what do you need from us? What resources do you need from us? Time, materials, staffing? And so I think those are important questions to continue for us to ask to make sure that we put the resources behind what we say are our priorities, or how, if we don't, then how, how does the public know that those are truly priorities?
Right.
We don't provide the resources.
I appreciate that, we have a list, so.
We'll be ready.
We are ready.
Go ahead.
Dr. Davis, I just want to acknowledge you and all the intentionality and thought and energy that went into this plan, and I commend the, the immersion of equity into these standards and into this plan, and so thank you for taking this on and to all that contributed to this.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, as Mrs. Lee indicated, we appreciate, she thanked you, and we thank you for putting all of this together, and then we'll close the workshop out and move on to the consent resolution agenda.
So moved.
Second.
For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material, and each item is discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted on with one vote without discussion. We've had a motion and a second to consider the 12 items on the list. Please call the roll.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn. Oops, Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Then the next agenda item is individually considered resolution, and that calls for approval of the continuous improvement plan that we just went over in workshop session.
So moved.
Second.
Right, be it resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board approved the continuous improvement plan is filed with the Secretary of Education.
We had a motion. First, Carnes, I didn't hear the second.
And a second?
If I could ask that you guys speak up a little bit, because you are, your backs have been patting, so I'm not able to hear.
Right.
Or C.
Yeah, or you could say your name, and I move and say your name, or second and say your name, and then that way we'll...
I would really appreciate it.
Clear it up. Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye, and a bravo.
Resolution carries.
Wonderful. Okay, how about request for future agenda items? Anything you'd like to see on an upcoming agenda?
Very good, Beth.
Any announcements?
I have an announcement. I would like to have a shout-out to Iowa State, Jamie Pollard, who is one of the football bowl subdivision athletic directors of the year. He is a graduate of Ashkosh North and also UW-Ashkosh. So, great job.
And the other announcements, Mr. Carnes?
Yeah, I have a, a few things I'd just like to say. First off, a couple of weeks ago, I was, took some time to visit some schools, and I visited eight schools in my journey to get to all of them, and it was definitely eye-opening, it was a lot to get to eight schools in a week. I just want to pass along some thoughts that I had heard to Dr. Davis, many of these, I'm sure you're aware. Message needing more support staff, talked about having a list, I'm sure you do, you know, wish lists for us to approve, and the literacy support, which we had talked about. And it really got me thinking about the conversation we had three weeks ago at the board meeting, and I had a number of people reach out and say, the questions I had when we had that DEI conversation were questions that a lot of the teachers are feeling in the buildings, making sure that they're going to be supported and given the resources that we've talked about already. So I thought it was nice that they had said that and felt that same way, so I'm glad that we had that conversation out in public, so that they could hear those topics being discussed. So I think there's some opportunities there, and I guess I just wanted to talk through that, but overall, I think the messaging from the schools felt good, they, they enjoy your leadership, like the support from administration, just looking to see what kind of support that we can continue to offer them in the buildings to do a good job, so. And special shout-out, I'll say, at school who doesn't get a lot of recognition is Andrea Fisher at True Academy. Very impressive. She loves what she does, and it's a, it's a difficult job, and I, I was very impressed by her.
Yeah, it was a great job. So, thank you.
Any other announcements?
Actually, yes, sorry. We were at the meeting, the celebration event, a couple of weeks ago, seeing a lot of the grants, and I guess to the public schools, to us, I think many of us noticed that a lot of the private schools had a high percentage of those grants compared to how many schools and resources that we have. So I think I would love to find a way that our teachers are looking to write more grants, trying to apply for those to, to better. I think there's a lot of opportunities there that I noticed, and I think, can't talk about it, but Beth was sitting next to me and making notes and stuff, that I, I would encourage us to find ways for those teachers to...
Sure.
To at least apply for those.
Yeah.
So, now I'm done.
Okay, Mrs. Lee.
Since we're on the roll of shout-outs, I'd like to give a shout-out to three Ashkosh North High School students, Maya Jackson, Harmony Obiala, and Merle Ajau. They are applying for the City of Ashkosh DEI Committee as student representatives, and just very proud of their, their interest, and I'm looking forward to working with them.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I don't want to cut anyone off, I need to do that, Mr. Carnes. All right, then, I would, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Right.
And Lee.
Please. All right, please call the roll.
Carnes.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.